I'm going to call this meeting to order, Committee of the Whole, February 5th, 2020, at 6:01 PM. And I have a motion moved by Counselor Anderson, seconded by Counselor Bateman, that the committee approve the 2020 February 5th Committee of the Whole meeting agenda as presented. All those in favor? And do we have any declarations of pecuniary interest? Counselor Rowley?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If there is any discussion regarding the grants and aid application from Smithfield Public School Parent Council, I will not participate in that as my daughter is on the parent council there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Mayor?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have pecuniary interests with regard to the Hilton Cemetery. I am a board member for Trinity St. Andrews United Church, which owns and operates Hilton Cemetery. But because all the cemeteries kind of work part and parcel, I'm declaring for the entire section when cemeteries are discussed.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. And we can move to delegations. We have the Library Committee, Heather, if you wanted to come forward. And yes, we move quickly. Welcome, Heather. And we look forward to hearing what you have to say. Our delegations have 10 minutes, and I was told by someone that if you're over 10 minutes, that I'm supposed to shut you down.
I was going to ask about the Academy Award music that you're going to play.
That was last week.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for allowing me the time to tell the story of the proposed library budget for 2020. I have tried to use some of the same language that was used in the municipal budget draft so that we are all on the same page. That is a library joke. So I'm going to be brief and concise, and this is the presentation overview. So what you won't see today, and I apologize if you were really anxious about this, are bar graphs and pie charts. There are none of those in this presentation. What I will talk about briefly is the background of the library, potential challenges for 2020, some new initiatives, and the areas of increase, because that is what this all comes down to. So what we don't have and what we won't be asking for is a librarian grumpy cat, because they give away book endings just to ruin your day, and library staff do not want that to happen. In terms of background, this is our first budget presentation in front of this council, so I wanted to just give a little bit of information for hopefully a better understanding of the library. The Brighton Public Library is under the management and control of a board. Our legal name is the Brighton Public Library. We currently have eight members on the board. That includes two council reps and six community members that are appointed by council. We are governed by a Public Libraries Act. This is the key piece of legislation that ensures equal and universal access to information. We have a staff of nine, which includes five full-time and four part-time and casual. And in the summer, when we receive grants, we usually add a summer student or two so that we can put on things like our award-winning pop-up library. We have two branches, one in Brighton and one in Cotterington. And at the Brighton branch, we have two service points. We have a total of 59.5 open hours per week, plus in the last couple of years, we've been able to open on Sundays during the Cotterington market. And you'll notice that that's a book page turning as well, the transition of the slides. So looking ahead to, in 2020, some of our challenges, the two biggest ones that I see are interlibrary loan and ministry funding. In terms of interlibrary loan, this will be our first full year of this service without delivery, and we have to rely solely on Canada Post. You may recall that in 2019, the Southern Ontario Library Service had their funding cut in half and delivery service was terminated. So we now have to keep up with the demand by using Canada Post. So not only is it keeping up with demand for our patrons, but it's looking at the cost of mailing items out to other libraries, the cost of mailing supplies, making bulk purchases, that sort of thing. Despite this, we were able to ship out just over 1,300 items to other libraries throughout Ontario in 2019. And ministry funding, I've put a question mark there because I think this is always a question mark. Are we going to see the trickle-down effect of provincial cuts? Will we see more cuts to the Southern Ontario Library Service? They are provincially funded. They provide our interlibrary loan service, professional resources and training, consortium purchases like Overdrive. They also give us internet connectivity, which we don't find out until the end of each fiscal year. So really, our challenges in 2020 are all about navigating the financial climate while maintaining service that meets the needs of our community members. So relating these challenges and our initiatives directly to this budget, we have three main areas. The first is the strategic plan, which will be presented to the board on February 19th. And we are looking to connect, enrich, and inspire our community members. We want to engage more and support our youth. We want to take advantage of our space, both physical and virtual, and we want to support lending for all ages in new and different ways. In terms of the pay equity review, for pay equity purposes, we are included in the job evaluation of municipal employees, so our job classes and salaries are tied to those of the municipality. With relation to partnerships, this ties into our strategic plan, because we hope to enhance our community presence, share our resources and skills, and reach a wider audience. We see many areas in the municipal strategic plan where we can partner and share opportunities to provide better service to the community. For example, in the areas of youth engagement and just better community engagement. This is one initiative that we're not looking at currently, and we probably won't in the near future. That's the Bookworm Group, and this probably would not be a good idea. So let's get down to the finances, because that's why we're here. Overall, the proposed budget shows an increase of 2.08%, which equals $11,525 from 2019. But let's dig a little bit deeper on that. This percentage increase reflects an increase in the following areas to the library: professional fees, salary expense, professional development and travel, communications, and promotion and advertising. So in terms of professional fees, this is the big chunk of the percentage increase. Remember that we are tied to the municipality for pay equity, and so I was asked to include $7,000 in our 2020 proposed budget to cover this area. Also, our audit has been increasing the last couple of years, and we have included a small amount of increase in that area. Salary expense, this is very minimal, and it's based on a 1.5% increase plus applicable step increases for the staff. And again, we are tied to the municipality for our pay grid. Professional development, in order to meet our strategic directions and be effective, staff need more training in this changing landscape, not only of libraries, but also of patron needs. Communication speaks directly to covering the cost of shipping materials for interlibrary loans. And promotion and advertising also ties in with the strategic plan and reaching a wider So we are not asking for increases to staffing. We're not making any big purchases this year, but what we are asking, and what you can see here, how the difference makes a difference. It allows interlibrary loan to continue without barriers to service, and this is a valuable service which is evident in our numbers. It allows for a pay equity review to ensure staff are being compensated fairly. And it allows for continued staff lending that is both meaningful and relevant and crucial for moving forward with new programs and better partnering opportunities. And last but not least, it allows us to provide program offerings that win awards. So any win for the library, I've said it before, is a win for our community members. This is a little bit dark, but you can see that this is people, and these are the narratives that showcase everyone's unique library story. And these are the stories that make a great return on investment, even with our four-legged So thank you for this opportunity. I will not tear this document in half, but I will take questions.
Thank you, Heather.
This isn't a question, just a supplement to what she said, and you didn't lie all through it, because I was checking you, fact-checking.
And I shook several hands when I came in, so it's all good.
Okay. Are there any questions from council? Go ahead, Mayor, and then Counselor Rowley.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think my question is just around the fact that you're not increasing the level of staffing. And my general concern about, now that the library's sort of split in two, and your ability to service the community, I'm no doubt you're doing it well, but there was talk when I sat on the board that that would mean we would need to increase staff for that purpose, and of course, for programming purposes and so on. So I wonder if you could just speak to that and why the decision not to, or if you found efficiencies or what have you.
Sure. So that was proposed for the 2019 budget, and it was included and passed in that budget, so we are actually at our capacity that we asked for. So we were at eight, we're at nine now, and we're doing well.
Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. Not a question, just a comment. Heather, to you and your board, congratulations on your award. Maybe you could just explain what that was. We know it's about the pop-up initiative, but just maybe you could give a little...
Absolutely. So we were presented with the Angus-Moat Award of Excellence, which awards best practices in customer service. And this is given by the Ministry of, let me just make sure I get this right, Heritage, Sport, Tourism, and Culture Industries. And we applied for this for our pop-up library initiative, which we believe brings library services out into the community, to people that may not know we exist, may not know what we provide, and just to partner with businesses, to appear in local parks, and just to get the word out about libraries. And we were very pleased to have Mayor Ostrander and his wife Tammy there for the awards. He didn't jinx it. We won. And that about sums that up. And we've also won the Award of Innovation for our tech help program. We won that in 2016. So we've won both of the two ministers' awards, so we're doing very well. Thank you.
Thank you. That's always good to hear. Counselor Tadman?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. For those new on council especially, could you just explain a little bit more about the interlibrary and how it works both ways, that we can borrow and they borrow from us?
Sure. So the interlibrary loan service is a reciprocal borrowing service throughout Ontario, and it is provincially funded through the Southern Ontario Library Service. And it allows us to ask any library in Ontario, and they can ask us for material to borrow. So you probably know that we can't afford or house all the material that our patrons want and need, so it allows us to go to other libraries and say, hey, do you have a copy of this book from 1998? And they send it to us. And now, it used to be a delivery service that we received three times a week, and now it is done through Canada Post. So it's a great service. We try and balance it because it's reciprocal, so we try and send out as many or as much as we can that balances with what we are asking for. It's a very well-used service in this community.
Follow-up?
Yeah, and maybe you could tell us once again that the funding for that was cut in half.
So the funding, yes. So the funding for the Southern Ontario Library Service, their budget, their complete budget, was cut in half at the beginning of their fiscal year last year. And what they decided was, they looked at all their services that they provide, they looked at their staffing, and they had to make cuts, and they had to make them really quickly. So they looked at interlibrary loan, and they didn't want to cut the service, but they thought the best thing to do was to cut delivery and have libraries decide how they would handle the delivery of the items.
Okay, thank you. Counselor LeBlanc?
My last more comment. As I come to council, in the council or to the chamber over here, I walk by there all the time, and it's always been used, and you see all the different groups, and you guys organize it very well. And I see all my friends going in there, getting books of my age that still read books, and so it's nice to see. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
I just wonder what the annual cost of that, the cost of, after the cutback, what the annual cost of, would that be for the mail, the Canada Post? How's that added to your...
So on average, for us, the average cost of mailing out an item was $1.56. And since this started, since we had to use Canada Post only, we sent out 593 items. So I can tell you that...
It's a bar fifty.
That, if you're looking at $2 per item at 593 items, that's $1,186. And I can tell you that our communications budget was over by 874 last year, and it was under the previous year. So we spent at least that much sending out the items.
That is working well.
It is working very well. It's really added to staff time, but I think it's such an essential service that we have to do what we can. And we haven't added any cost to the shipping materials, because sometimes that gets lost too. It means we have to buy a lot of envelopes, a lot of packing tape, it's a lot of staff time, but I think we can spend time this year looking at how we can be more fiscally responsible in that area. So bulk purchasing, looking at buying from different companies that might offer us a discount, those kinds of things.
That's great.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Rowley?
Just maybe a suggestion on that. I don't know if that's something, Heather, that maybe the library could partner with the municipality as far as buying bulk products. It might be something to look at. Would it be? Is that something we could do?
I'm sure it's a possibility, that conversation that we had. Do we send out a lot as far as packaging for, might not?
Usually, we send out bipurilator for sending out packages, and we can't do it for $1.96 or whatever. It costs us like $4.25.
Yeah, okay. Counselor Tadman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Since the mayor is making sure you don't speak longer than 10 minutes, I can extend this a while. So would you, would you please inform council and the other people that are here just the kind of groups that you serve on a daily basis? Because I know myself, but the others may not know, and it is a wide variety, from little wee ones to...
Absolutely. So let me just go back a few slides, well, one slide. So we serve children. We have ongoing children's programs that happen on a weekly basis. We serve seniors. A lot of seniors come in, not only just to use our collection. For a lot of them, it's just a social visit. They now come in and they use our meeting space for bridge and a grief drop-in group and knitting. We have teens, as you know, that hang out in the lobby, which is why they are on the top of our strategic plan moving forward. We have families that come in, like in the picture on the bottom right, so family time. It's Lego time, it's family time. We have adults coming in to read the paper. We have people that come in and just sit, and sometimes they want quiet, and sometimes they just want to chat. Sometimes they want tech help. So from young to old and everything in between, it's one of the last places, or one of the few places, that doesn't ask you to purchase anything when you come in. We're not telling you anything. You can take out items for free. We're happy just to chat with you. And I believe that it's a different experience for everybody, but we can really see from day to day the difference that it makes for people.
Great. Thank you. I think that's it, everybody, and we've asked all our questions. Very short.
Meeting room. You're open 59.5 hours a week.
That includes Cotterington.
Is there, okay, is there much, is there very much demand outside those hours for your meeting space? I've heard just people looking for meeting space in town, and we talked about the library.
Right.
And the library's booked up quite a bit during those 59.5 hours. But is it, is there anything on the shoulder of those times that you're seeing any demand for?
We've had a few requests for, mostly it's been people that want to come in at 9:00 AM, when we don't always have staff there. There's been a few requests for coming in after we are closed, when we close at 6:00. And right now, our policy states that we can only offer the room during opening hours, and that policy will be reviewed in March and then brought to the board for a decision on that. But the board has said in the past that we have to consider staffing. There always has to be staff there because of safety, security issues. So I don't know whether that will change at this point. But you're right, our meeting room is usually fully booked most days.
If there's a way to, yeah, in your review, it's something for the future to be, really.
Absolutely. Yeah, we will discuss that at the next meeting in March. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
And I have a motion moved by Counselor Bateman and seconded by Counselor Anderson, that the committee receive the delegation from Heather Ratt, CEO, Brighton Public Library. Do we have any citizens' comments? I don't think so. So we don't need that. And we're moving into our deliberations. Tonight, we're going to be looking at the community support budget. So in your mailboxes, there was a, an agenda, and it did have it included. Is this an updated one possibly that was included? I'm not sure.
It is the same.
It is the same, okay. So if you don't have it, you can turn to the Schedule A in the back of the binder, and it is there. And you may want to turn there anyways if you're wondering if we need to look up anything, because all of the documents that go with the requests are in that section as well. In past years, what we've done is we've started with the cemeteries, just because there's a little less questioning around that, to get the cemeteries out of the way. I mean, we know that having these groups take care of these cemeteries is much less expensive than having our staff do it. So let's start with the cemeteries. We have $22,050 budget for 2020. That is about a $3,000 increase from the previous year. So any discussion on that? Any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Not to interrupt what you're doing, but would it be appropriate that we hear from Linda tonight on where, based on this full page of maybe where it might be taking us by where we should be heading and where, right now, where it's heading over the top?
What are you talking about? Our budget overall?
Yeah.
So you're wondering where we're at right now?
Well, where we're going to be as we move through this, where we, what we should be thinking about as we move through this. Do you understand what I'm saying, Linda?
Linda?
No, no, I think she does.
Perhaps. So on your desk, I gave everybody the grants and aid policy. I probably should have sent it out a little earlier so you could refresh your memory on what it's about. There's three different types of grants that we give out within the grants and aid policy. There are community grants, seed money, or in-kind support, and an example of that would be the docking for Baru's boat. Then there's the community investment grants up to $5,000, and that's, again, for some sort of a special project. And then there's the larger ones, up to $20,000, which is the maximum grant and aid that we have within this, within this policy. There were a number of categories that groups could apply under, and also what, there is a list of eligibility criteria. There are a few that may not meet that eligibility criteria, and that's totally up to this committee. And then all the applications were included so that you could see that each group wrote a lot about what their projects were for and how they could use the funding in the future, and that type of information is provided to you in these applications.
So with the funding formula, how much are we looking at for a total for this whole section that is within our budget? I think it was 130...
I'm just going to refresh my memory. I think it's somewhere around 139,000, but I just have to find that page.
Yeah, if you want to take a look at that, that's okay.
Right now, those grants and aid applications that you have add up to $152,265, plus you have new ones on your desk from the other night. We have two that we want to add to the discussion list. The one was the Baru boat that I provided to you last week. And the newest one is the Bridge Hospice, so they're there for your consideration as well. And the grants and aid, 1.5% of the 2019 tax levy is $130,693.
So that's our goal, to end up there, actually to have some left over so that we have some funds for things that come up during the year. That was kind of your question, right?
That's what I was driving, I think, to have that in the back of your mind while we're moving here.
Okay. So are we okay to go back to the cemeteries, or? Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And what is the 1% tax increase? What's the amount now? Eighty thousand?
What are we at, total?
No, I just mean that for each, percentage, eighty thousand something. I don't know what it is. Was it 87? Yeah, in and around.
In around eighty-seven thousand is 1%?
So it's 87,000 for a budget increase, so we're 89.5 for a tax increase.
Okay.
And Linda, what are we, what's our overall increase right now going into this?
The blended increase?
Yes.
3.14%.
3.14, and that doesn't include any of what we're discussing tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so everything that we add tonight is being added to that?
It's the municipal.
What's the municipal amount? Right now?
And for every 1% municipal tax increase, the blended rate will change by .49.
Okay. .49, so half.
Yes.
So even at 150, we're looking at adding at least 1%.
Well, more than that.
To the blended.
Yeah.
Okay. Is everyone kind of ready to dive into this, or? Go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm just looking at the grant and aid community grant program sheets that you handed out. At the bottom, grant requests over 5,000 require written and presentation. There are some... There are some that are over 5,000. Are we expecting to hear from those folks at some point?
So, they can be invited to speak to you. We have not, in the past, invited them unless they, they want to come. So, if that is council's wish, we were going to include them in this meeting, but we thought with the time constraints this year, that we would, we would limit that type of...
Okay, so, so it's not a requirement then, for this year anyway? Just because it says "require," right? So, it's, it's not required then, like I say, for some of these to then come to make a presentation? They're, they're going to be okay? They're going to be looked at equally and fairly then, without having to make a presentation?
Unless we decide otherwise. Linda, you mentioned that some don't meet the requirements. When we get to it, are you able to just quickly highlight which ones don't, just so we, as we're talking, we have that idea instead of rifling through? But we'll first start by talking about the cemeteries, and then we're going to move into that upper section. I want to get the cemeteries done, because, okay, cemeteries. $22,000, we're looking at a couple thousand dollar increase from last year. Do we want to take them apart, look at them individually? Are we okay to just go over them? Comments from Council?
Council Rowley? My guess is it's just maintenance costs going over, right? So, how do you, how do you not cut grass?
Yeah. Council Tadman, you had your hand up first, and then Council Anderson.
Just in all fairness, because the others pretty well stayed at last year's, the extra 1,500 for Hilton, I don't necessarily see that it's justified. But if everybody else is okay with it, I would go with giving them all what they've asked.
Any other thoughts on that? You can go ahead, Council.
You took the words out of my mouth. I just, that's about a 75% increase for Hilton, and the others seem to be able to hold the line. If we, everybody could hold the line, that would might help us, again, in the long run here.
I'm just looking for their, just to pull it out, and we can look at it more closely then. Just have to find which one it is. There's too much paper here, Linda. Just kidding.
They said that in addition to their ongoing care and maintenance of the cemetery and repairs, monument repairs, this year, they're also installing a storage shed on site.
Did they say an amount?
No, but that's...
But that's what the difference is then. Okay, so I guess the question is, are we in favor of the shed, or do we want to just bump them up by maybe 500 or something like that? What are we comfortable with? Any comments, thoughts? We could, we have a few other changes here in some of the others, so we certainly could go to three, if, if we're feeling that the four is too much of a jump. Council Anderson, did you have a thought?
I was going to suggest that if they're adding a shed, okay. I'd say do that, go to three on that one.
That's your thoughts on that? Everyone else is comfortable with three? Council Tadman, yes? LeBlanc? Council Rowley? Bateman, three? So, if we go 3,000 for Hilton, instead of four, so that gives us 21,050. And that leaves us about 119 for the other sections that we're going to look at. Everyone follow that? We're good with that? Okay, Linda's made note of that. So, then, we can go back up, we'll go back up to the top, and we'll work our way down. As Linda mentioned, we have the Bridge Hospice that did submit something later on, and so they need to be added. Actually, we'll discuss them right off the bat. And then, we also have the boat for Baru. We'll discuss that at the end, if everyone's okay with that. Don't let me forget. So, everyone has the Bridge Hospice in front of them. And how much are they looking for? 5,000? Linda, do you know what they gave us last, or we gave them last year?
This particular group has requested funding only once. Other years, when I sent them the grant and aid application, they said, "We're fine right now."
Okay.
And, and so, they don't request money unless they need it.
Okay, so, oh, that's good to know. So, it's not a yearly thing, it's just when they have a need. Okay, so, we have budget 5,000. Let's just go down the line and look at everything. We have Quinney Salability at the same amount as previous years. We have SOHO at the same amounts as previous years. Sunny Days looking for a few extra thousand. We have Supper's Ready, that's looking for a little bit more this year as well. A lot of these projects, they're, they're project-based, right? So, it depends on what they're going to be doing. Not all of them, but sometimes that's the case. Council Tadman?
Deputy Mayor, last year, we sort of went line by line, and I think where there wasn't any, any increase or very little increase, we just...
Yeah, I think I'm just trying to get a feel for what we have here, because we do have a few that we're going to have to look at. But, but for sure, like, I mean, we can start, like, Quinney Salability, there's no change, they have a good program.
Do you want to eliminate them first?
We can just say yes to them, and then move on, or we're good with that? Okay. And Proctor House SOHO, they haven't asked for an increase in a number of years. We know what they're doing there, so let's keep them.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Sunny Days Camp, $5,000. Did you have a comment?
Yes, I did.
Your microphone, you did it wrong.
Maybe Linda, I didn't see a budget there for that, a complete budget from Sunny Days.
We'll find it. There's something here, Supper's Ready.
I got to find that, because there's something in there.
Really, we shouldn't, we shouldn't give grants to anybody if they don't show us a budget.
There's a couple like that.
Sorry, I'm looking at some sort of a budget where they say, "Grant requested 5,000, donations 1,000, marketing and advertising, six trips, her trips, and insurance, 140 a month, and 6,000." So, they don't have a balanced budget in here.
No.
No, they don't. So, this isn't, what I'm always looking for is if they're looking, they're implementing something new, or they're just increasing their ask. It looks like they're just increasing their ask for this year, by the looks of it.
And so, it begs the question, what is the extra $2,000 for?
Yeah.
When year-over-year, they've been able to operate a good, and it is a good service for the community.
Absolutely.
They've been able to offer a good service for $3,000 of taxpayer money. So, I'm, I think we should just stick it at $3,000 and see where we end up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Looks good. Okay, so, Supper's Ready as well is asking for a $2,000 increase.
Same comment.
It's no, it's not a different project, right? Same comment. So, let's put them at 3,000, and we can circle back to any of these if we feel we need to at one point. The Beacon is looking for a $500 increase. Do you want to keep them at 6?
Same comment, yeah. Keep them at 6.
If anyone doesn't agree, just jump in, or wave at me, or whatever. Presque Lighthouse is nothing. Waterfront Regeneration Trust, $500 again, so that's the same, that's good.
So, Deputy Mayor, if I may just hear, I know we've given $500 to the trust every year since, I think it was about 1995, long before any of us were on council. And I'm sure, on some level, they're doing good work. I'm just curious...
They put signs out.
What they're doing for Brighton, for their $500. Are we getting lots of good signs?
Signs along the lakeshore.
Oh, yeah? Okay.
Linda, go ahead.
So, the Waterfront Trust actually sent an email out the other day, and said they were going to some sort of a tourism symposium, and asked if we wanted to include any mapping of our trails along the waterfront, and that type of thing, and that they would promote us. So, I did send that over to our Director of Works.
That's worth $500, thank you.
That's, that's good info to have. Okay, everyone okay with moving on with that?
Yeah, I think that's something our economic development should be involved, connected with. And we're also, we were talking about a possible another trail. Is that near that trail? No?
That would be Butler Creek.
Yeah.
The roadway that went down by, around the marsh, down by, down by the boat launch. We were talking about putting a trail through there. Is that part of the...
It would be part of that system, I imagine. It's right along the...
It doesn't cross the water.
No?
No.
Yeah. It doesn't, eh?
I'm not talking about...
Actually, if you do go down, this is where they put the trail.
There you go.
They say they also, they said in here that they promote us on their website.
That's great.
Well, you should maybe check that sometime. Okay, so, the Horticultural Society at 700, and that's been the same every year. We're okay with that?
We get good work for $700.
Brighton Community Care, 5,000, that's consistent from other years. We're good with that. Okay, so, we have the Smithfield Public School Parent Council looking for 20,000. Have I got some comments on that, or suggestions, or thoughts? Linda, did you want to pipe in?
Okay, so, for the next three?
Yes.
The Smithfield Public School, and skip over Pine Ridge for now, East Northumberland Secondary School, even though they're looking at specific projects, it is still a school asking for money. And I know it's the parent council for one, and a school-student type of project asking for the other. But the policy does talk about that school, and let me see how it says it. There are words in here somewhere. "School boards, primary and secondary schools, post-secondary institutions." So, that kind of wraps it all up into one. That being said, it is still council's discretion, this is your policy. But once you don't follow your policy, then it opens it up for more. So, I'm just giving you that information and advice. And then, the Pine Ridge Retriever Club did not provide us with any cash handling, which is a requirement of our, our policy. Last year, they came to council outside of the grants and aid and budget process and asked for money. It was 11th hour before their event. Council awarded them that money. I advised them at, at the time when they picked up the check, by giving them the grants and aid policy, what would be required, and they didn't provide that cash handling policy to us.
Okay, so, when you talk about there being some that don't necessarily fit with our policy, these are the three you're speaking of, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, let's start with Smithfield Public School. Don't necessarily fall into our policy. Mayor Asher Endig, you want to comment first on that?
I do, and I'm of two minds on this. One is that we're already building a sidewalk on their property, essentially gifting a sidewalk to the school board, which is very, very generous of the municipality, in my opinion. And so, I would probably make similar comments around the playground equipment. However, I'm also aware of the fact that we don't, the municipality doesn't have a park in Smithfield. And so, the children of Smithfield, this would be their only opportunity for playground equipment, unless we were to invest in a park somewhere in Smithfield. And I don't even know what we own up there that would be park-ready. So, this is a good opportunity to partner. But I'm, I'm very much of two minds on this.
Thank you. Go ahead, Council Tadman.
First of all, I can agree with you, and I don't see anywhere where there could be a park. But, on the other hand, the rumor has been for some time that that, and there's no reporters here, so I don't want to scare anybody, but that school is, and we should get ahold of the board before we do anything. If it's on the chopping block, we're not going to put expensive equipment in there. And it could well be. And I know that there's always talk that maybe isn't, doesn't come to fruition. The other thing that, for me, and I've ranted about this before, we've got a full park of equipment, playground equipment over off Cedar Street that's never used. And if we could find a place in Smithfield, I think we should put it there. Because, and, and the new people that are moving in, and if those condos go through, there, there won't be young children probably a lot there. So, it, that, it's a lovely park that the Kinsmen raised the money and put the equipment in there, and it's fenced off, and it sits idle.
But we, we need to focus on what we're doing with this.
Well, and that's why I'm saying, I think we need to hold off on this for many reasons, but mostly to see if, if we can't do something better than putting a playground there. So, I wouldn't vote for it.
Okay. So, I do have some concerns about us deviating, deviating from our policy, because we get so many requests, and there's only so much to give away. So, that's where my concern is. But I, yeah, we can still continue to go around, and I want to hear from the rest of the council. Go ahead, Council Anderson.
Just regarding Smithfield Public School, I think there was a lot of speculation in the last statement there. I've talked to the school numerous times, and they've told me, with the enrollment being up, and with the over million dollars that they just spent last year on refurb, refurbishing, or, and, or whatever you want to refer to, all-new classrooms, all-new lighting, all-new electrical. They're planning on moving ahead with this school, and that community is growing. You can see it yourself. So, I don't see any, it's not on any list. I found that out, as far as prohibitive to be repair, because they wouldn't have repaired it, those type of things. So, they're adding, actually going ahead and adding more fencing to that school, with, without the playground being a part, it might be part of the plan, but they're doing that anyhow.
Okay, so, at the end of the day...
I want everybody to know that, don't put a message out there that Smithfield's being closed, because that's, that's gone on for far too long now.
Okay, so, are you in favor of the playground, or are you not?
Well, we need to discuss that. I don't want to...
That's what I'm trying to do.
Yeah.
So, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
And the other thing about, you want to know now, an answer? Is this called a vote right now?
No, we're, we're discussing the playground equipment.
I'm getting, I'm getting stereo here, so. Where, where are we on this?
We're discussing it.
Exactly.
But we're not discussing whether the school's closing or not. I already said that to Council Tadman as well, that I need to know what your thoughts are on the playground, and she gave me her thoughts. So, I'd like to know your thoughts.
I think the mayor is correct about looking at, we, I think it's in our strategic plan, again, is about looking at the entire community. We also have, if you're referring to schools here, East Northumberland has a wonderful project, too. There's another school that we may have to say no to, if we're looking at Smithfield being a subject of not being able to give any support to because of our policies. How can we give anything to ENSS if we can't give something to Smithfield? So, we have to think about that, too.
Absolutely, we can discuss the two at the same time.
No, I'm just tying the two together, because they're both, now they're falling under one category, I think.
Council Bateman, did you have any thoughts on this that you want to share? I was going to go around.
Sure. Thank you. I'm not saying yes or no to it. I, I think, I think the mayor, I'd echo, I think it was the same thing. I'd like to hear from the school board, because I know the parent council has requested it, has the school board, are they on board with this project? And I know it's in the guidelines, both the eligibility, and you don't like to deviate from that. I was non-council, but I know we've deviated that from before, because the council did contribute to the track that is utilized by the community, right? So, you can't say no based on, just on that. So...
May I speak to that, Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, that was a partnership, which we still have with the school board, in terms of being able to use that facility in the off-times. And I would suggest that if council wants to go down this road with Smithfield Public School, that we bloody well make sure that the community has free and, and easy access to this playground equipment, and that we are indemnified from its use. That it's, you know, if, if someone slips and falls, it's not the municipality is going to get sued, regardless of our partnership.
not the municipality is going to get sued regardless of our partnership, I, you can't guarantee that, I know, but, still, it'd be good to have that indemnification.
Sorry, yeah, just, that was my point, because we've made those partnerships before, and when you read it, it's not just for the school, for the community, so we'd want to make sure that, that was all, the dyes and tees are dotted and crossed.
Okay, sure, I'm just going to go to this side of the room, if we have any thoughts here, Councilor Rowley, or, oh, she's not, sorry, I'm ignoring you, Councilor LeBlanc.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, my thoughts on it, it's school property, like the mayor said, and there's also the liability that our children would be, the children would be able to go use it, and for insurance, for liability, the other thing is, does it have to be the full $20,000?
No.
Could it be $5,000?
Yeah.
And if we're going down this road, we've got to make sure that we open it for other people in the, in the future, too, and does it fit, the other question is for Linda, does this fit our core, building something that's set on our property, and there is a lot for sale, I don't know if it's sold yet, right beside the church, I just noticed that.
It's sold.
It's sold, it's sold, I noticed it was just there, yeah.
Go ahead. So if there was property to purchase in that community, and if that was council's desire to put a playground there, then you would be able to access your park, parkland reserves, not to purchase property, but then to build the park, it probably costs you the same, and you wouldn't have the same, the school wouldn't have the same access, and also further to that partnership agreement that we had with ENSS for the Sports Field Track Quest project, I think that's what it was called.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that, they partnered with the municipality for a few reasons, the municipality did donate some, but the main reason was because the municipality, as a, as a charity, could write the receipts for all the donations that were given to that group, and that was kind of the partnership agreement that was struck with the school board, and the Track Quest people, and the municipality.
And the track is, is, because of the location even, is used for quite a few different things, like soccer, you know, you know, I mean, there's a lot of different things that are going on there as well, so after hearing from everyone, I'm just wondering if maybe we would consider, sorry, did you want to speak to it? Yeah, I was going to suggest perhaps maybe a smaller amount, but go ahead.
My suggestion is we remove it from grants and aid, and ask staff to open up a dialogue with the board and the school with regard to partnering, and see if that's an opportunity. We may get told no, in which case, I think everybody has their answer.
Yeah.
If we don't have a willing partner, then I don't think we have a willing investment to make.
I think that's actually a good idea, the grants and aid, there's a specific purpose, and that is to help a, you know, an organization, a group within our community to accomplish something which is for the community as well. This is sort of like that, but sort of not, right, and that's why I think we're all kind of having that issue, so are we comfortable at this point, not including it, and asking staff to open up that dialogue? Go ahead, Councilor Anderson.
No, I think that's a good idea, I just want everybody to know, there is one park in Smithfield, it's called Lagoon Park, and it's the park that's at, on Drummond Street, with the tree that's fallen over on, on the road almost, with the creek running underneath that, that spot, we cut the grass there, all it was, do you know where it is?
Yeah, it's owned by the municipality.
It's just the south bottom part of the hill, coming down from Smith Street, there's a park there, it's probably only about two acres, if that, but it's a nice little park with no benches and no nothing.
And, and does it access the cemetery?
No, that's over on the west side, this is the east side of Drummond Street.
It does, it does fall, it's right beside where I used to live, and the municipality would come and cut the grass regularly, so there's, there's some property there that we could look at if we really wanted to put a park in Smithfield, and it's really actually quite centrally located as well, so...
Kind of nice, yeah.
But, so are, are we all interested in, in taking it out, out here, and having staff create dialogue, is everyone just kind of a nod ahead, so that we're, we're good with that? Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
One thing to ask the mayor, and to you Deputy Mayor, so we go to the, to the, to the school board, and they come back and they say yes, so do we allot the full 20, or do we allot the five?
Well, I think we, that, that creates a, a discussion, if they say yes, and we're prepared to invest in it, it, it's something that we're, we don't put in grants and aid at that point, it becomes a partnership between the municipality, so it would be a capital project through probably Parks and Rec or something like that, and it may not hit this budget, so, I mean, I think we're recognizing that we're punting this down the road, no matter what we're doing.
No problem, okay.
Okay.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I was just going to say, I, I like the idea of having a park up there, because there is a lot of kids, there is a lot of residents, but I love the idea of partnering and exploring that with staff, because once you do that, there could be provincial funding, federal funding through sport and culture as well, that we don't know about if you go through grant and aid.
So let's, we're, we've taken that one out for now, or, we've taken it out, let's go to the East Northumberland project of $20,000, we've heard a lot about this, we kind of, we know what it is, you know, they're short by their $20,000, they're asking us for the 20. It's a great project, no, no doubt, and I think we all support it, but I would love to, again, let's go around the table, see, see what everyone thinks, Councilor Anderson.
Thanks, I don't mean to take over, but, I'm looking at their numbers, it looked like if we give the 20, they'll have their, their full amount, and that, and that, that letter was sent a couple of months, a month ago, so I don't know where they are still, they're probably still fundraising, I presume, there might be still opportunities for them, this is again, similar to what happens when people ask for fundraising at the last minute, things go over the top, but if we give them the 20, it looks like, based on their numbers, we'll put them right to where they need to be, maybe we don't need to stretch it to 20, and we should think about that, maybe.
Sure, anyone else on this? Go ahead, Mayor.
So my concern, again, is that we're investing in, in school board facilities and properties without there being much return on investment to the municipality, I get that this is a memorial garden, and so if we did this anywhere else, there wouldn't be a huge return on investment, it would just be a nice-to-do. I'm absolutely supportive of this on a personal level, I know we are all supportive of this, we're all going to show up to that trivia night, and, and participate, and donate our money, and that's, that's a personal thing, that's what we choose to do, how we spend taxpayer dollars is quite a different discussion, and, and that's what we're doing around this table, but I think $20,000 is a big ask, and much too large a request, first of all, I'm not frankly sure it's something we should be using municipal taxpayer dollars to pay for, and frankly, the school board isn't putting a dime in, not a dime, that's concerning.
I, I think that this whole section has, we, we can say that about everything here, but we just, we happen to set aside this certain amount of money for these projects, so I'm wondering if maybe there's a, we know the school board's not putting money into it, and that is disappointing, but yet we do support it, maybe there's a lesser amount we can give towards this, just to help them get over the top, or maybe at least show our support in that way, Councilor Tadman, then Rowley, then LeBlanc, then Bateman.
I would suggest $5,000, that's all I have to say here.
Thank you, I'd agree with that.
Is this something we could consider taking out of our youth initiative fund, as it is kind of, I don't know if we have, we took $2,000 out last year to send two students away, it was the same thing, I was just wondering if we could promote this some way through youth initiative, I don't, I would have to look to see what we have in there, I'm not sure we have enough, but could we kind of take some?
Linda can maybe give us a comment, would it even fit, Linda?
I don't know that there's any hard fast rule for that reserve, it was established to support youth as they, when they accomplish something and are going outside the community to continue, that's the way I saw it in the beginning, and we've been trying to replenish that fund, there's not $20,000 in there.
No.
Yes, I was just going to look it up, the only reason that there's 16 is because we put $11,000 in at the end of last year for grants and aid that were not handed out, not mailed out.
If it could come out of there, I would agree with Councilor Tadman, that we give them $5,000, and if we can take it out of there, that would be just as good as taking, taking out a tax rate.
Okay, Councilor LeBlanc?
I agree with the number, but I was going to say 10, so...
Councilor Bateman, I believe, was next, did you have?
I'm not going to give a different number, because...
No, it's not Price is Right, I just wanted to, well, Patrick might be able to speak to this, the deputy clerk, like, is, well, the first part you can't speak to, like, is there a hard deadline for the end of this, because I know they have active fundraising, and they do have an active lottery license, so that they can still do, so I'd be in favor of an amount, but not, I don't think we should do $20,000, because they have an active lottery license to achieve what they want to achieve, I can see us contributing, you know, a certain amount, but they have an active lottery license, if there's no end date, it's a memorial wall, it's something you, you build too, and there's more pride in it if you actually...
I think this is for the base construction to get it going, though, that they need the funds. Any other comments on it? I'm, I'm going with the five, if we can take it out of the youth initiative, that's, that's okay, I just want to make sure we're using those funds properly, go ahead.
I'm okay with the five, but I think the youth initiative fund should be not to pay a landscaper to put bricks in at the high school, frankly.
Yeah, are we okay with it coming out of grants and aid, five?
Add one thing.
Sure.
I agree with the five, for, because it's been well thought out, I think, but perhaps it should fall under the same criteria that you had with the Smithfield, maybe it should be set aside and reviewed again separately, do you think so, or not? If you don't think so, I...
I think it's different in that there's no use, like, there's, it's not like we can go play soccer on it, or the kids can play around it like we would a playground, it's, it's a memorial, right, so, and I think a number of us will have families named there, so it really should be treated as a memorial, and it is very much a community project, I get that, that's why I'm, I'm struggling with, you know, going against our policy for this purpose, and I, the $5,000 makes a lot of sense.
Just to go back to the mayor, I, I agree with, that's why I agree with the $5,000 to make it, and maybe the message should be out there for the community to help rise to the occasion for that other 15.
Yeah, I do see this as a community project as well, even though it's, it's on school property, but it is a community project, anyone can buy a brick there, and they are, so, Linda, go ahead for...
I'll go on a limb here a bit, and some of you will remember the hospital program that we did a few years ago, where we accepted donations towards the hospital, and then we matched that donation up to a ceiling, so perhaps this is how you raise $10,000, is by saying, we will match up to $5,000, and you bring the, the check to the municipality, and we'll write you a tax receipt.
Okay, did you want to say that into your microphone?
Thank you Deputy Mayor, so if we're going to do that, I think it's a good idea, but let's get them to their $20,000 if that's what they need, and I'd support the $10,000 from the municipality, matching so that they get to 20, I'm, I think that's a nice way to go, and I, I agree.
So we're increasing it to 10, from what you're saying, and we're going to, up to 10, and we, as long as whatever we, we see, well, we're looking to match, basically, up to 10, right, so we can get to 20, is that, that's doable? Is everyone okay with that? I'm getting a majority of nod of heads.
Yes.
Is anyone not okay? Say your piece.
Not that I'm not okay with it, it's just, you know, we're not following policy again, we're opening the door again, but it's a one-shot thing that everybody should know, we're not going to be doing this all the time.
That's right, we do make those decisions at the end of the day.
Yeah, and we've, we've done things like this before, but...
And it's a unique project, right?
It is.
And that's, and that's why I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and it does benefit everybody if they want to use it, okay.
Okay, so we're all good?
Would say.
Want to nod, Mary? There we go, we got, Councilor Rowley, you're not going to say no.
Thank you, so, so question then, up to 10, I'm, I'm good with up to 10, I'm good with kind of challenging the community to get there, where does it come from then, and then how does that work in the tax pie, that's what I'm saying, like, do we get it from somewhere, do we get it from somewhere else, or do we take 10, what if we only use three, because they can't raise the rest?
Well then, well then...
Is that just a reserve then at the end?
Well, we never, we try not to give away all of this, so that we have, if we have other requests this year, we can, we can give it away then, or it goes into reserve, correct? So we have $130,693 here, either we use it, or it goes to reserve, right?
So it'll be the same if there was a balance left from the $10,000? We'd just go in a reserve?
Yeah, yeah, or if we have another project at one point, or the grant, we do get grant and aid requests sometimes later on.
So at the end of the year last year, in my transfers to reserve report, my recommendation was to take the balance of that grant and aid that we had from last year, and put it into youth initiative, which is why you grew to 16.
Exactly. Okay, so that amount is up to 10, now we just need to go back up to the Pine Ridge Retriever Club, we, we've run into problems here before, when we don't get the correct information, and that's why we beefed up the policy, so I'd like to see us go back and ask them for, for the correct information, any other thoughts from council on this? Go ahead, Councilor Tadman.
Last year, if I remember correct, they were having the, the, what are the, meets here, in our municipality, and so it was sort of a one-shot thing that we did.
That's what I thought.
That's what I thought, I definitely, at this point, I'm not ready to give a thousand.
Go ahead, Councilor LeBlanc.
That was the national retriever trials.
Yeah.
They have the regionals, they have the Canadians, that happen here every year, and the nationals happen once every two years.
Okay.
They happen here in Brighton, so, and they have other trials, and they have, they have about six trials that happen through the year, when you see the dogs or the big kennels, that's what they have, they're starting the spring, so they have six of them, and they advertise, the people eat around, eat here, stay in motels, or they bring tents or whatever, trailers there, or they stay at, at the, and they use my land over here to train their dogs at the Leonard Brook, they would use the, the dog park, because they buy too many dogs.
Go ahead.
The first thing that people tell, tell me, and I suppose you get it too, is when you say you're doing budget, they say, don't raise my taxes, we're going to have to make some really hard cuts through the rest of this, and I think we need to sharpen our pencils, so I think, I think people will understand, if you want every service going, we can raise your taxes, but we can't, you know, in good conscience do that either, so the best I would even go with for that is 500, and I know it brings people into the town, but we, we've got to start cutting.
Well, but as we were told, we haven't received all the...
And not until then.
And I don't think we can do anything till we receive that, all the information.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
And I'm just looking at their budget, and it's not balanced, and with our $1,000, they have $10,000 in revenue and $7,000 in expenditures, so they have a $3,000 profit.
Yeah, so that's difficult, that makes it difficult for us to see why we would need to give them anything.
Yeah, I know.
Right? Yeah, so I, I would, I think we, I'm, I'd like to strike this one for now, and then perhaps next year, if they want to reapply with better paperwork, they can, or later on.
I agree, good group, I like dogs, but it looks like they've got enough money for this year.
Yeah, yeah, okay, let's move on, what else do we have?
Bayrou.
We have the boat slip.
Yeah.
There's not an amount here, is this, is the $1,000 again, is that correct? We have boat slip only, but it's...
When the group was approached about their grant and aid application, they declined to submit one other than for the boat slip, and then submitted their other report to council regarding the boat.
Okay, Beach Hospice, did we agree to that one at 5, sorry?
Can we just go back to Bayrou for a second?
Yes.
Because I'm looking at their application, it says $2,500, is that the cost of a boat slip?
Yeah, because it's not in here.
That's what they're estimating.
Okay.
Boat slip only, I believe they said.
But we give it free, Brian.
We do, well, it would be in kind.
Yeah, so it didn't show here.
They're suggesting that the 25 is an in-kind donation, so it's, it's just revenue we wouldn't be able to take in, so...
Yeah, yeah. So there's no impact to this budget, then?
But, so it says, we received an in-kind donation of a slip at the Bay Street Municipal Dock, and $1,000 for 2019.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yep. And then 1,000 shows here from last year.
Right. So it was the boat slip plus 1,000, which showed last year as $1,000.
Yes.
But this year it's just the boat slip. You're, you're 100% sure?
Plus their big ask.
Oops. I'm just not 100% sure.
It's only 2,500.
It just says 2,500 includes in-kind.
Mm-hmm. Because they're making, well, they're making the big ask, so maybe they figured that's why they're...
So if you flip over to nine, number nine, support, "We have received community support in the form of funding for many organizations, Town of Brighton Free Mooring and $1,000 a year grant." And I'm not seeing anywhere where it doesn't...
But they're not asking for it. Amount requested, 2,500.
Right. So it's, I'm going to say clear as mud.
I have it by email. I'm going to find it.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we discuss the big ask at this point?
Yeah.
While, while Linda's looking for that? So we received the paperwork from them. They give us a few options. Um, I'm sure you've all read it for their boat. Um, they're asking for the full 125. They're asking for, um, 100 and a no-cost loan of 25, or they're asking for a no-cost loan of 125. Those are the three options they've given us. Anyone here interested in those options or are we looking at maybe different options? Go ahead.
So I, I can't imagine us giving a zero-interest loan to anyone, even, even to Beirut. Um, I think what I'd like to do with this request is give it to staff, the fire department specifically. I know they work closely together. Um, and see if there's opportunity here to try to find some funding model that would work. And if we, if we need to loan them some money, I'm supportive of this. I think it's an important request. They do a lot of good work out on the bay and further. Yeah. And, uh, and, you know, I think it would be good for us to, to support them if we can. I know they have a boat. They, they have a boat in Kingston. They're ready to buy it. It's, um, it's suitable. It's not a pleasure craft like the one they have now. It's an actual former fireboat. So it's an actual rescue unit that they can refurb and, and get ready to go. So, um, I would very much like to support them in this, but I want to make sure we're doing it right.
So your purpose in having the fire department look at it is to...
I, I want to make sure that our fire department says this is a good idea.
Okay.
Because if our fire department says this is, you know, this is not a good idea, we should somehow let the Coast Guard manage this, then that's another story.
Because we could look at giving them, say, 20,000 plus a slow-interest loan or, I mean, there's other ways to look at this, um, other than their three options, I think. Counselor Tadman, then Counselor Rowley, I see your hand up. We have a few others. Go ahead.
So first of all, one person's life is worth more than 125,000 always. Um, and Baru can get out in the area that, that we, we are responsible for a lot quicker than the Coast Guard unless they send a helicopter in. On the other hand, they work together, Coast Guard and Baru at every call. They, it takes the people from Baru a long time when you live out the other end of the town, the old township to get to the boat. Uh, so there's lots of things to figure, think in, in this. It used to be that, um, the fishermen did all of this, that, you know, out of the kindness of their heart and their, their, um, feeling responsibility that everybody looked after everybody else. So that is not happening anymore because the, there's no fishing and the fishermen are retired. So we need it. But I think, I, we can't go 120, I mean, that's, that's beyond what I'm thinking anyways. But there is other ways to, to not say no to them, but, you know, um, and not be totally disgraceful to them because they're doing a good service. But I don't, I, I could not support the full, but I could support something like 20,000 plus. We could loan through, like we've done in other ways, um, through our reserves or some way. When we backed to Quest for the track, we did that. Remember? And they paid as the donation comes in. I can't remember exactly how it went.
I think that's why it would be a good idea to ask staff to take a deep dive into this and, and bring back some recommendations.
Yeah, because the boat's still floating.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Rowley, I saw your hand up as well.
Thank you. Excuse me. Um, so reading through their, um, their letter here, they've raised 75. They can get the boat for 145, so that's 70,000. They're asking for 125 to, for stuff. Should we not have maybe a bit better of a breakdown, excuse me, what they're going to do with the other 55,000? I would, I, I agree, Mary. Maybe we give them some. We loan them some, but if, if the numbers add up, I mean, um, like, say, another 55,000. I, I, I'm, I'm not a boat person, so I, maybe it costs 55,000 to kind of retrofit a boat with all of the extra safety features that we need. But should we maybe ask for, um, if there are any deficiencies in a boat, is it worth us spending 70,000 that they've got to put 55,000 into to fix the thing? I don't know.
Could you have your hand up, Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Okay.
So what the fire chief was here in his budget, they were looking for fire trading for going out to the seas, to the water. The other thing is, looking at the mayor when he was talking about this, so he's talked to them, so they know that they have this boat. We don't want them to lose the boat. This is one year, we can help them get the boat and next year we can help them with their stuff, whatever, get their list of stuff. Because you don't want to lose it. And, uh, to get their boat. And I know that the boat that they have now floats. So maybe they can sell that boat to use against this boat and make sure that they don't lose it. You know, because you've got to look at it, it's for the community. We're supposed to do the right things for the community and it's for safety of our own, our tourists and anybody else that gets there. And like you said, the fishermen are a dying breed and very few of them left that are going and a lot of them are retiring and they used to do it. So now we have a group that's going to do it. It's one of our resources, it's one of our things. So I'm aboard with it, whichever way it goes.
At what amount? Do you have a suggestion on amount?
The B is they got 75 and the boat is 145.
It says it, it's somewhere in...
145. So 75 and 145, what's that difference?
70.
70 grand. So you, you give them something, you give them a loan for 70 grand, then they can secure the boat. And this way they keep on active fundraising and getting, and going.
Okay.
And make sure they can come and ask for board.
Counselor Anderson?
My initial thought was somewhat where the mayor is, um, it should be, fall under our fire department somehow, some, or be connected. They're, they're, and they're a good, they're a great group and, and thank goodness they're there and that type of thing. But a lot of communities that, that the local fire department has, has got their hands on a boat or they have the boat themselves. Uh, Quinny West has, Balvo has, it's on and on and on. You can look, they actually manage the boat. But you could have a group that's man, running the boat, uh, perhaps. And that's where we can talk to our police chief and find out how the relationship can work together perhaps. But I think maybe that's, and if you look at their stats of where they go, they go as far as Wellington almost and they go to the U.S. border and they go to the west, I forget, to almost Coburg. So they're covering a, a lot of areas that's not bright and proper if you want to look at that. There might be our boaters out there, but they're covering a lot of area that's, uh, that, uh, search and rescue also covers, but you don't, I have a counselor that doesn't agree with that. But anyhow, I, I did read their report and, and so we, if we reeled it in a little bit, I'm just saying, keep, keep the organization alive and, and maybe get a boat together. But I think it should be under the direction of our own fire department probably.
Go ahead.
So just a little background on Baru. Um, it is a Coast Guard unit. It's an auxiliary Coast Guard unit. So that's why they cover from that area. They are mandated by the Coast Guard to do so. And when there's an emergency, they are, they are dispatched by the same joint, task force, joint communication group that the SARTAX are, are dispatched through CFP Trenton. So they all work together. They all work very, very closely. And for training purposes, our fire department has benefited from this partnership because they've been able to, um, train with the SARTAX out of CFP Trenton as well because of that Coast Guard relationship. So I agree. Let's keep the partnership alive. Um, let's help them out somehow. Let's do it right. I, I just want to make sure we're doing it right. And so I ask again that we would, um, punt this back to staff and ask them to come back to us and tell us how we can best help fund this, uh, this service, this boat purchase for Baru.
And, and so, um, I think we kind of have a general consensus...
And keep it out of grants and aid.
So completely out of grants and aid. So we're, we're looking to strike this out of grants and aid. Uh, we would like to get a report from staff as far as how we can do this. I think that most of us are interested in a, a bit of a, a loan and maybe a little bit of funding.
Yeah.
But perhaps that's what, that's what staff can let us know. Is that pretty? Counselor Tadman?
Thank you. And everybody should, should at least go when they have their opening house day because you can learn a lot from it. And it's well-equipped, the boat they have now. So I would like to know a little more about when you said, you call it stuff, whatever the equipment is. That's well-equipped and I, I'd like to know, are they going to sell that whole thing with equipment and how much new? It's pretty vague when you say, "I need this much for stuff."
So we need a little bit more information.
Absolutely.
Overall.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Everyone in agreement on that?
Yes.
Sure. Actually, Counselor Bateman?
I was just going to agree with most of you. I, I, yeah, I hate doing that. Not, I hate agreeing with you. I like the idea of, because we're keep tying, going back to safety and the fire chief and stuff. I would like to hear, not just a staff report, I'd love to hear Chief Cadex speak to the capabilities of such a thing because it could probably be used for a lot more than just fires on the water. Quinny West had one back in the spring or early summer. But even, you know, we're flooding, what can it be used for? This is a whole gauntlet of stuff, so not just a staff report.
It's drowning, too. Drowning.
What, what this can be used for and how it can help, not just in emergencies, training to prepare for emergencies.
Counselor Anderson?
Um, I'll pass.
You can turn your, turn your microphone off then.
Well, just answering.
Counselor Tadman?
May I suggest that we have them come in, um, and we've had them other times, just to explain exactly, you know, what their need is, everything about it. And that way we'll be able to make a, a better decision too and staff will hear. That would maybe help.
So we're looking for a staff report and maybe perhaps a visit from the, from the group?
Yeah, I think so.
We're all good with that?
Okay, we have that, this staff reported their visit before the end of the budget. Would that be doable?
We're taking it out of the grants and aid.
Okay.
Linda, did you have something to add?
Um, I do. It's, it's regarding the email from Baru. Um, so it was from Colleen McCabe. And, um, she described how she had met, um, with Mr. Castleman and Mayor Ostrander. They submitted a letter to mayor and council, which we know about, uh, seeking support beyond the scope of the grant and aid to replace the rescue boat. And then she said, "I understand Brighton generously provides a slip annually at the municipal marina. Is this part of the grant and aid request? If so, I will ensure a request is submitted promptly." Yep, correct.
So, um, Linda, are you able, tell me where we are total with that upper section, um, including Bridge Hospice at 5,000? Did we discuss Bridge Hospice? Okay, I can't remember if we went back to it. Let's just discuss that one and then we'll see where we're at for that section. Um, we all have it here. It's for an, uh, an HVAC system. And they're looking at having to pay out 25,000. They're looking for, um, help from us to, to, to the 5,000. Go ahead, Counselor Tadman and then Counselor Rowley.
Uh, they've never asked before and I would fully...
Once before they have.
Oh, right.
Only when they need it.
Yeah. Only when they need, and this is very important when people are...
Yep.
Really sick and suffering. So I would say 5,000 without question.
Did you steal your thunder?
Ditto.
Okay. Good? We're all good with that? So 5,000, we're good with Bridge Hospice? Uh, Linda, does that... We are.
Okay. So the top section where the ask was 74,800 is 44,300. So that is 30,500 off.
Okay.
And the cemeteries, uh, you had talked about already.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the ask was 22,050 and we're at 21,050.
21,050. So, okay. So next we just have Brighton Community Policing and they have increased their ask to 4,100. Um, anyone have some thoughts or comments on that? Go ahead, Counselor LeBlanc.
Since I settled the board, and I happened to attend that meeting, so that was for, because they have the, uh, new driving simulator, they have the new drug awareness and the panels and the pamphlets they give out, they're in great demand now because it's the only one of its type in, uh, Canada, in North America. And it's not in miles per hour now, they got it in kilometers. It also has the one for drug awareness, alcohol and the goggles for everything. So the high schools, the plow shows and everything are asking for it. Uh, they were asking for more. Uh, Vanderland donated a beautiful va, uh, trailer to put it on it, played in it. Tri-Courty Plastic has donated $3,000 to have it all stenciled and everything they have it done. And this is to help out the staff that are there, the, the people to go to all these shows that are there. And it's, and it's getting more popular because we have the only one.
Should they attach some sort of loony dispenser things that people can put their loony in, in order to drive?[1622.83] Looney in, in order to drive? No?
And the schools use it, they're going all around, going everywhere. And they're traveling a lot further. And that's the thing is though, because they have this now.
Trying to be funny, it just doesn't work. $4,100, do we have concerns about that? Are we okay with that increase? Is this a one-time thing? Is this what their budget's going to be going forward? Or in around there?
Unfortunately, the demand for these units and the trading is, is going. Brighton's got the first one, and they're using it in all the schools.
So, yes.
And I don't think there's too many, even municipalities that have asked for one yet.
Counselor Rowley?
So, when I look at their breakdown, this looks like it's probably going to be an annual request because it's all about mailbox rental, unit rental, insurance, insurance, postage, blah, blah, blah. So, this isn't just a one-time thing. I think this is going to be kind of an ongoing request.
Counselor Anderson?
I think it's a small price to pay for community policing anyhow. And I like what they're doing. I know they're part of the safe communities, Northumberland Safe Communities as well. They're involved with that machine. I can see it only growing and I'd like to see it grow, the community policing, so I think showing support in a small way is good.
And we have new members joining, too, which is-
Yeah.
After they passed the security clearance.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Director of Finance, did we not, did they not used to have a much larger budget than the $12 and $1,800 we're seeing? When they were, yeah, a storefront that we asked them to keep open, right? From time to time. It was in the $5,000 range, was it not?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, I mean, even historically, $4,100 is still not what they used to ask for when we were working with them to keep washrooms open for Memorial Park and things like that. So, I'm totally supportive of this.
Just briefly, it's the small cost to pay instead of getting another enhanced police officer at 178.
There you go.
And they are, they're out in the public. And I don't see them as much as I used to, but I'm not uptown that much lately, so.
Okay. I think that's a general consensus on that. Oh, Counselor Bateman, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I was just going to say, I support this as well. I know it's quite an increase over last year, but we just had the OPP here talking and Counselor Tadman touched on it. A lot of what they do in the education on, especially on distracted driving, which is surpassed by four, impaired driving. If you educate, then the need for enhanced policing goes down, so-
That would be the hope.
To me, this is a no-brainer.
Yep. Okay. So, next we're going to move on to the hospitals. We have requests from four. We have a new one from Kingston Hospital. We did have that delegation, I don't know, when was that, November, October? So, we understand what that's all about. Everyone is asking for more than the previous year. I know the last few years, we did knock back what we were going to give. So, let's start off with Campbellford Memorial. They're asking for 15. Last year, we gave them 84. I know their ask was higher. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a general comment around the hospital donations, if I may.
Sure.
And it's a suggestion more than anything. I get that the Kingston Hospital is a big build and they do great things, but if we give to the Kingston Hospital, the Bellevue Hospital's next. And believe me, they'll be right at the door. So, my suggestion to council is that we increase the three hospitals that we normally give to slightly, to 8,500 each for Campbellford and Northumberland, 17 grand to Trenton, and that would be our hospital gives. That's my suggestion.
Can we just go a little higher on Campbellford and Northumberland to maybe 95? I just think that would be-
And so, if we do that, my suggestion would then be to double whatever we give them to give to Trenton because 60% of our-
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Patients go there, so it would be 95 and-
We'll give Trenton 20 and the other two 95 each.
19.
19.
I just like the simple math.
And 95.
Sorry, how much are we giving Northumberland?
I'm going to go through this. So, the suggestion, the conversation we've been having, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, let's move on. Campbellford, 9,500. Trenton, 19,000. And Northumberland Hills, 9,500. And nothing for Kingston. That's the conversation. How does everyone feel about that? I tried, it didn't work, so I try to keep people happy. I can't keep everyone happy. What's that?
Still knocking 30,000 out of there.
I support Counselor Rowley in that.
Oh, now?
Now I do.
So, we go, I'm going to start over. 10,000, 19,000, zero, and 10,000.
You've got to go 10, 20 and 10. That's the simple math I'm talking about.
I said 20, you said no. Okay.
That was before Counselor Rowley convinced me.
10, 20 and 10.
So, 40,000 total for the three hospitals.
We're still in 30,000.
Is everyone in agreement with that? No. Have your say, please. Counselor LeBlanc?
When they gave the presentation on Kingston, we have 3,400 people that go there out of this, this community, which is about 100 people a day on the average. And for the heart attacks, for different things that go there. Even if we cut it in half, or give something, I understand that Bellevue will come next, I understand. And how we got to Coburg Hospital.
Yes. Just let him finish for a minute.
Yeah. It's just that, it's where they go. So, and they came and asked, they didn't come and ask. And I know Trenton, about it, the other ones, Campbellford, our Durham people use it all the time, and those things. That's just my point.
I understand what you're saying. And it is a difficult, it's difficult to look at. I actually went on a tour of BGH a little while ago. It's with another group, the Chamber in Bellevue. And there, we're doing their nuclear medicine, which is like 30, 40 years old. And I've had, my kids both have gone for tests there. So, you know, I'm surprised they didn't come and ask. I expected them to. It's, again, another good project, very, very expensive. But the thing is that we can't support all of them. We just can't. We don't have the funds to do that. And if we do say yes to Kingston, we can expect these asks from the others. And then we're spreading ourselves so thin. And so, I hear what you're saying. I understand him. It's a difficult one. The Mayor and then Counselor Tadman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And I absolutely agree. In a, in a perfect world, we would be able to give hundreds of thousands of dollars to every hospital that every patient in Brighton went to so that they could have the best equipment and all of our citizens would be looked after with top-notch care, which we know they are, regardless of the equipment that they have. But if we give, because there's 3,400 patients annually that go to Kingston, if we give some money to them, then what about the, I don't know what the numbers are, I'll throw some numbers. What about the 8,000 that go to BGH? And what about the 2,000 that go to Picton Memorial and Lakewood and Oshawa and Peterborough? I just think it's a, it's a never-ending request. We know the three hospitals in our direct catchment are Coburg, Northumberland Hills, Campbellford, and Trent Memorial. So, that's why I'm trying to keep this simple. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to give dollars directly to those that are direct, directly impact the municipality's patients. That's, that's my rationale. I absolutely respect everything you've said. And I wish we had the money.
The bottom line is, this is actually, this isn't our money, this is tax money. We personally can give to whatever we have the heart for. And we should be, because this is the only way that they actually get funds to buy equipment. So, but that's not what we're talking about right now. This is, this is, we're talking about what we're going to give as a municipality to these hospitals. And that's why we have to stick with what's in our area. Go ahead, Counselor Tadman, and then Counselor Bateman.
Fine. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Tadman.
Now, I was going to agree. I support the three hospitals that are on here because those are our three primary hospitals. I'm surprised, like you are, that BGH isn't on here. I support what Kingston's doing. And I know they have a certain percentage of people that go there, but that's an extension of our primary hospitals that they get passed on from either Trenton or BGH. People from here don't go directly there. That's a referral process from the three that we support. So, I stick to the three that we support.
Counselor Tadman?
Love to be different.
Yes, you do. And that's why you're here.
In my personal family, and I'm sure all of your families, and I can just bring up, the former mayor would be dead and buried a long time ago. They do tremendous work there. I'm not saying Bellevue doesn't, but Bellevue's never asked. If they asked next year, then I wouldn't be giving to Kingston. You know, but this year, I think we should give them 10,000.
So, you're saying, you're thinking we should give them 10,000 on top of the 40 that we're giving to the others? Okay. Counselor Anderson?
I, I think we should just stay with your proposal there, Mayor, with the, the local hospitals. I think we have to think of our own healthcare situation here, where we're going with that, too, because I think there's some things that may be developing in the near future on what we may, may have to make some decisions on as well. Not as part of this budget, but, but something to think about. So, call the vote.
There's no vote, and I'll decide.
I know. Then we have to behave. Any other thoughts? The general consensus?
The only thing, when they gave their presentation-
Yes.
Their donation wasn't for one year, it was for a five-year program.
It was a five-year commitment.
Five-year commitment, it was going to come to $87,000.
Yeah.
And that would pay for all the equipment and where to go with all the radio.
So, if we say 10 this year, we kind of are saying 10 for five years.
For $87,000.
We can make that clear in our, if we go down that road, we could make that clear that this is a one-year-only donation. And they would have to make a request.
Are there other members of council that are interested in giving a $10,000 one-year-only Anyone else? I need a consensus if we're going to or not. Four are saying no. So, we're not going to. Okay. So, for that section, we have 40,000. Linda, what's our total in, at this point? So, we budgeted 130 no matter what, but that leaves it open to some of these other items or other items that come up during the year, correct?
Correct.
130,000.
130,693.
Yeah. Okay.
That amount was not budgeted.
That amount was not budgeted and we do not have to budget that amount. That is your maximum.
We're adding 100 grand to our budget.
I understand that. But normally, we do, we do budget the full 100, we do budget the full 1% so that we have the money later on in the year to, to use for other projects because other things come up. Is that correct? Is that how we usually handle it?
Last year was the first time that we didn't go to the max since the policy came into play. And so, we did budget that extra $5,000 that was left. You could do that again this year if you would like.
So, sorry, what was our total right now? Sorry. I didn't write it down. So, we're at 109. Do we want to add to that so we have funds for later? Do we want to leave it at 109?
May I ask, what does 109,450 do to our overall budget? Because this means, regardless of what we do, we're going to have to go back and take a good look at the other portions of the budget if we're going down this road.
So, currently, you're at a 6.01% municipal tax increase. 3.73% blended.
I'd like to see us add even just another 5 or 10 to this, just so that we have it sitting there. We know we always get requests. I would rather them not be unbudgeted requests. It's harder to, I'd rather have a little bit here and then we can add it to a reserve otherwise.
I want to agree with you in that. I think if the 20,000 that we have you added, it's maybe the quarter of a percent, that just still gets us to four, I would imagine, or maybe four. If we put 20,000 away, I think you're right. There is always something that will come up.
Is everyone okay with that, or Counselor?
Did she say 20,000?
Yes.
What's the number?
I'd say take it to 120 and make it 11,000 left. Well, you're bringing it down to-
Okay. Linda, tell us what adding 20 to the 130 will, will do to our numbers.
Municipal will be 6.23% and blended will be 3.84.
3.84.
Got to bring it down a bar and a half.
Is everyone okay with leaving it the one, or putting it to the 1.3? Sorry, the 130? Counselor Tadman?
How much did you put in reserves that was left over from last year?
13.
11,000.
It was 11. I think that's all we needed.
What's, an additional, so put it up to 120? Yeah, we put that in youth initiative reserve. It's not to be used this year. So, if we put it to 120? Okay, I think 120 is a good, everyone good with that? So, we have a little bit of room? Okay, so 120. And that brings us to-
Both, yeah. 3.3.
So, 6.13 municipal and 3.79% blended.
And what is our, just a question for perhaps, what is our, Northumberland County, what are we basing it on? 3% increase?
Correct.
And any chance it's going to be any lower?
Yes. But I don't know what the chance looks like. But there is always a chance. It won't go higher.
Do you want some information to help you on that?
Yes, I've been waiting for your email.
Do you have an idea when we'll know for sure? Because it really does make the difference. I don't want to start cutting if we don't have to.
End of next week.
End of next week. Okay. When's our, what do we have next? What do we have yet to talk about?
Your Schedule B.
Yeah. So, we have to look at that yet?
Are those in the budget?
They are.
They are?
They are.
Yes, thank goodness.
So, yeah, exactly. So, the, our only discussion around those is, do we want a library or not, essentially?
Well, we'll discuss, so we have that to discuss, but we've discussed everything else, correct? So-
So, we're fine with 120 with the grants and aid stuff?
We're fine with 120. So, we're going to move on to our external budgets. But I don't want to see us go back and start cutting anything until we know what our county budget is going to be, because I'd prefer not to. So, let's look at external now. Flip over to your last tab.
Can I ask a question just before we move on?
Sure.
Thanks. I don't want to change anything. But we did make a couple of notes as far as staff reaching out to the schools and things. Will that just come at a later date at some point and then we will have to find the money somewhere else if we so approve those-
I think so.
Reports?
Yeah.
That's my understanding from our discussion.
Great, thank you.
So, here we have our library board, police services board, OPP contract, Quinty Access, Lower Trent, QDC, DBIA, which is in, in, and out. Linda, have we received all of these external requests? Or, I believe you said that there were some missing before.
That's correct. So, we have received a budget from DBIA. We have received Lower Trent's budget. It's in your package. We have received the OPP contract. Police Services Board has a budget. Our library board, you know, has a budget. And development charges have increased through the last study for the library. So, we do not have QEDC and we do not have Quinty Access.
So, you're just estimating here. Is that correct?
I am, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on any of this? Go ahead, Counselor Rowley.
Thank you. And this might fall flat with some, for sure. I really want us to, at some point, really review the Lower Trent. And in light of some of the comments that we received at our meeting on Monday, I do find that they've kind of extended their authority just a little bit too much. And I don't know, based on some of the new policy reviews from the province, if we need to look at that a little. But I think we need to be a little tough with the group that's being tough.
Excuse me, I need to speak to this. You should come to a meeting once in a while, Counselor Rowley, and find out-
Very well, how Lower Trent works. Thank you very much.
No, you don't, or you wouldn't have made your statement. May I speak now?
Okay. Let's just have a conversation.
Whatever Lower Trent does is mandated by the province. It's up to the province if they want to change their mandate. And if they don't want to look after and protect wetlands and things like that, as we've heard, then, then they'll have to change the mandate. But in the meantime, Lower Trent never does anything that's not above the law. And what you heard Monday night was, I better not say what I'm going to say, but it wasn't correct.
Okay. So, we have this dilemma where we do get a lot of complaints about the Lower Trent. And I'm not saying they're valid or not. I'm not saying any of that. We have the province that's, that's, you know, there's rumblings going on there. We need to figure out what we're doing with our Lower Trent contract and we need to decide whether or not we need some more staff input, I think. That's pretty much what we're looking at. Mayor, do you have a comment? Mayor, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess from staff's point of view, what choice do we have, or do we have any choices, when it comes to the services that are provided to us by the Lower Trent? Or are we mandated through a larger authority to engage with them? Somebody hasn't spoken all night.
There you go. So, good questions with respect to what the legislative authority is. I'll do a little research and find that out. We all know that the regulations and the funding have changed, and we, along with all the other municipalities, have been invited to participate in the review of Conservation Authority's mandate. And I think that the mayor is attending a get-together Friday. So, there's a number of different sessions that are going around this area where we have an opportunity to review the mandate. I met with Mrs. Bateman and offered my services as whatever they are to assist her in going forward with the review of the mandate. She wants to take advantage of that, that's great. If she doesn't, that's great, too. But the bottom line is that their budget has been cut about $64,000, $65,000. So, what's the impact to their service provision? None. They've found efficiencies elsewhere. So, their mandate, quite frankly, has not changed, even though the funding cuts have been made. Whether there's some additional funding cuts that are going to come their way over the course of the next few months, don't know. I think time will tell. But I think that we need to keep our eye on it and continue to watch what their mandate is. And certainly, from a staff perspective, I'm sensing that there's a little pushback or there's a little flexing of muscles, I think, from the Conservation Authority. And I had a blunt but tactical discussion with Mrs. Bateman last week or a couple of weeks ago with respect to, you know, protocols and how we should be communicating with each other. So, I thought that that was well taken. So, we'll see what happens over the course of the next months to come with respect to the ongoing relationship that we have from a staff perspective. But I think we have an opportunity to provide some input into the mandate. So, I'm certainly looking forward to that.
So, at this point, we need to decide budget-wise. We can obviously agree to accept this. Any kind of talks isn't going to change their budget, I don't think, for this year drastically. I think that we probably can, you know, go ahead like we do other years. And if anything is going to change, we will know, right? Okay. Are we all satisfied with that? Everyone has different views on the Lower Trent. It's okay that, you know, we're going to have those. Counselor LeBlanc? And then, I think I saw hands over here as well, and the mayor.
A little bit on the Lower Trent. So, I've known their mandate for a while, so I'll tell you a little bit of history. When they first started was for flooding and stream levels and building beside the shoreline. And the province gave a mandate on wetlands, woodlots, and our property. So, they've been given those things with that. They had to come with staffing. Rules came along for a better environment. And they got into development and building. The town deals on making sound decisions that we're not getting flooded or on wetlands and stuff that we do, same as our committee that I have to deal with. The other point is when you brought up development charges, in one of your viewpoints, about development charges on these, that this council should go back and relook at the development charges. After I attended a meeting put over by the council that I reviewed, and I was there to listen to a complete presentation, which is another revenue added stream that we could add to this town.
Okay. Let's keep our focus right now on talking about these external budgets, okay?
I'm okay with the Lower Trent waters.
Okay. I saw some hands over here. And then, Counselor Bateman?
I think where it's said now, we have to look at... It is what it is. They're looking at the mandate. We were just sent just before the meeting, the summary on the Berry consultations that took place today, which I'll review, and I'm sure Mary will, what's taking place. But whatever they change, the mandate doesn't change the fact that we're going to be dealing with Conservation Authority, no matter what municipality. So, whether their mandate changes, it's still going to take funding to cover whatever their core may... However it changes, if it stays the same, take away add, they're still going to have a mandate that we need to fund. So, I think we just move on.
Okay. Mayor? Okay. So, at this point, I think all we can do is approve where we're at right now, and if things change, we will be informed. So, did you have something to say? Were you... Okay, you're done?
The only thing I would say is, excuse me, if the province decided to go down the road of, you know, unloading or saying to the municipalities, "You don't have to use the CAs for the things you use them for, for agency issues," we would then be in a position of having to find the funding to provide ourselves with those kinds of engineering studies and so on and so forth. What I don't want to see us do, and I'm not saying this is going to happen, I'm just trying to read the tea leaves. And this province is... The current government is kind of all over the map with policy. So, it's hard to read the tea leaves when it comes to our friends at Queens Park. But I don't want, in June, for the province to say, "Okay, we're cutting the Conservation Authority's mandate by 50%. Municipality, you're still responsible to do the things you have to do. You don't have a wetland engineer to go to to deal with this. And how do we get our money back if we've already budgeted it?" So, I just want to be cautious as we go down this road. And maybe, instead of giving a lump sum... If we do pass this budget, instead of giving a lump sum, we do it as we do with many other of the larger budgets. We give it 50/50, or 30/30, or whatever we're going to do. I would just want to be cautious, just in case the province uses their heavy hammer and does something dramatic. And that could very well be, because the province is looking for a win. Let's remember that.
So, number one, even if the province did that, would we not look at that for the next year? Like, I don't think... Would those changes happen just like that? That's just my thought. We can look at tea leaves all we like, but at the end of the day, I just can't see a change happening that quickly. But Linda, do we not only pay one big lump?
We do for that, yes.
So, but can we look at doing it in two lumps, or is there an issue?
Absolutely. Well, you know, we pay QEDC quarterly. We pay Quinte Access quarterly. That's how they invoice us. Lower Trent invoices us all at once. Library Board asks for an advance in January.
So, everyone's different?
Everybody's different.
Okay.
And remember that we only collect taxes at the end of February, and the end of April, and the end of July, and the end of September.
Okay. So, one lump is still maybe not as easy as paying quarterly, just with our tax, how our taxation works. Any other comments on this or any of these items that we have here? We're looking at the whole lump here. Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
Wouldn't we have a legal contract with them? So, if they bailed out partway through the year and took our money, and all of a sudden the government scraps it, where do we stand?
Okay. We're not talking about bailing out or anyone taking our money.
No, no, no. If they bail... Like, if they're... Yeah. Like, if we give them money upfront, I don't like doing that. But where would our municipality stand?
I think bailout was an off-the-cuff comment. I think the concern is that the province will chop the mandate so dramatically that the municipality will need to seek funding to fulfill our mandate with regard to planning services that are being provided by the Lower Trent. That's the concern.
Yeah. And you know what that's going to be, Brian? We've sat around here long enough to know it's another downgrading from the province, because the mandate's going to be the same. They're just going to say, "Okay, now, you'll pay it," the municipality. What I just want to quote what Mayor Harrison said when they had a discussion around their table. "We get good service from Lower Trent, and we can't afford to do it ourselves." There's absolutely... We can't even get a damn planner here. How in the hell are we going to look after all that's mandated from the...
All right. I think we've discussed this to death tonight. Lower Trent, everything else on here, we're good with. There's not too much... We don't have too much control over some of these items. We know that all of these groups give us good service for what they're doing. Nothing too much has changed. When these others come in, Linda, do you have an idea when Quinte Access and QEDC will come in? I'd hate to see a big change flux.
I know that QEDC is having their AGM coming up, but I don't know where their budget process is.
Yeah. It's... Well, theoretically, the budget will be passed at the AGM, which is the 20th of February-ish, something like that.
But we have no idea what that budget is? Okay. Who sits on Quinte Access? Do we know what? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
There is some mix-up with the... Because there's that... The whole transit system that Quinte Access, you know, basically runs through Quinte West, but Quinte West takes their gas tax. And something went askew in their financial part, but it's going to be pretty close to theirs, so I don't think we're going to have a problem with that.
Okay. Okay. Are we all kind of good? Lot of heads? Yes, no? What's that?
Quinte West receives Brighton's gas tax, too.
Yeah, they do. Okay. Okay. So, we're good? So, the next budget meeting is going to be second draft, right? Well, sorry. Our next budget meeting is tomorrow, which we're going to be having an in-camera session to talk about... I don't have the agenda, so I don't have the proper wording in front of me. I don't want to see... There we go. Lots of stuff. The meeting after that budget meeting is when we look at second draft, correct?
Correct. And so, the next scheduled date, I believe, after tomorrow is February 11th. It's Tuesday next week?
Yeah. Is that in time?
Well, I'll get it together.
Okay. Good.
Sorry. We should know... What's Thursday? It should be Thursday. We should know the answer on Thursday.
So, if we don't have the answer until Thursday from the county, do we want to have second draft on Tuesday? That's...
I'm going to say yes. I don't think we should be budgeting in Brighton for whatever the county decides. I've never... I know it's a blended rate at the end of the day, but Brighton needs to spend the money it needs to spend, and that's up to us to decide. And we'll need to raise the funds through taxation that we need to raise, and that's for us to decide. And we shouldn't let the muck and mire of whatever the county decides to interfere with that. I get that it's a blended rate, but for too long, municipalities of our nature waited to see what the upper tier did so that they could try to figure out how to do what they need to do. You know, we need to manage our own corporation.
I agree with you. I agree with you absolutely. I think the hard part is, the bottom line is what matters to many of our taxpayers, and it's just helpful for us to know what that bottom line is. I don't think anyone wants to cut anything. We want to do what we're doing, and we're making some good decisions, and we're doing it well. There's no doubt about it. It just helps us, that's all.
And if we figure that we're going to be with around a 3% increase at the county, it will not be more than that. So, we govern ourselves accordingly.
Okay. So, Tuesday, we'll do second draft?
So, if I may, I have a question for the committee, maybe some consensus. I know that when we bring second draft, we'll probably be looking for some advancement on capital projects through resolution. So, we can look forward to that next week as well.
Okay.
And then, the other thing is that our schedule was so aggressive and so tight with this budget process because of our late start. And obviously, because we all decided that we were going to meet this much to get this done, we had scheduled a public meeting. We had talked about a public meeting for February 18th, which is the Tuesday after Family Day. I would have to advertise for that right away. We'd only... It'd only give one week notice that we were going to do it. Or do we want to postpone that to March 2nd? And if we do postpone it to March 2nd, be aware then that your bylaw will come forward two weeks later, 17th, and I'm away then. But it'll just be a budget bylaw that will be in your agenda.
Are we satisfied with that new timing? If we were to move the... February 18th, we're going to be ready for a public meeting? I just want to make sure that we're all... I think Linda's making sure we're all comfortable with that. She's going to go ahead and advertise it. She has to advertise it, so we need to keep within that schedule to do whatever we need to do to get there. Okay.
The later we wait, the longer it's going to take to get some of these contracts out. So, the quicker we get it done.
Okay. So, February 18th, Linda? That's the consensus. Counselor Bateman, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Just for the February 11th, I found out today, and it was prior to before we set the dates. I might be a little late. They're going in and doing some more stuff on my lower back, so I'm going to try to fix some stress fractures. So, I could be an hour or two late.
Okay.
Or less.
Okay. So, we're going to move on to question period? He asked all his questions last night. Wayne said we're doing a good job. Let's minute that.
While we adjourn, I have a question about roads that I can ask to Mr. Castleman.
Sure.
Mr. Parkinson gave us a surface-treated roads rehabilitation program that went out for many years. Does Mr. Parkinson have a similar thing for asphalt-treated road surfaces? Well, there is stuff in the roads needs study, but it's...
So, good question. I'll find that out.
Thank you. And if he does, could he please pass it along to council? Thank you.
Okay. We actually have two motions, because I missed the other one. So, I have a motion moved by Counselor Rowley and second by Counselor Doug, Counselor LeBlanc. You have to put your last name there. That council received the 2020 Grant and Aid Considerations Board and Committee's budget proposals. All in favor? And then, I have a motion to adjourn the February 6 to 20 Committee of the whole budget meeting at 8:07. Sorry. That was moved by Counselor LeBlanc and seconded by Counselor Rowley. All those in favor? And we're adjourned.